Welcome to Howard Wood. We thought this would be a fun spot. I was out for Casey's one-on-one a couple of weeks ago and we have a nice conference room in there. And then there's also a space that we've started to use up here and it's just a nice spot. It's still one of our facilities that we don't always get to enjoy, but on a beautiful afternoon, it's a great spot and it lent itself well to a sports theme. So Andrea has popcorn for you and she wrapped your board book for this year to look like a football. So let's thank Andrea.
Oh, that's her theme. What is it?
She's been running with a good theme. So feel free to open your books. Those are just one that you can all take a look at. Carly's going to highlight some things from that later on in our board development section. So really...
I'm so sorry. Which was it?
It was the...
The SDM.
The SDM. And then there's no password?
No, shouldn't be. So we've kind of split it just into a couple of spots, just some nuts and bolts things for the good chunk of our first part. And then we'll just do some activities for you to get to know each other a little bit more during our second part. And our district leadership team is here to just review our district priorities. The document's already posted online, but we thought it'd be good to go through it and just highlight some things while we have time together this afternoon. So that's kind of the plan. And we'll see what time we get done. We're not on any hard and fast schedule. We do have supper for the board or dinner if you're a town kid, supper if you're a kid like me, between this and our regular board meetings. So we'll plan to be back at IPC sometime around 4:30, 4:45. And if we have a little time in between times, that's fine, too. So questions from anybody or anything that I missed just with kind of covering the overview of our afternoon together? Good job getting out here and getting to the thing. Andrea will check periodically in case he was going to watch, too, in case there was others. But we know typically this is not one that has community participation. So we'll assume that people will listen online if they're that interested. All right. So first of all, everybody should have your shirt. We have our Cultivate theme on those and we want you to wear those proudly as well. And then we're going to start just by going through some of our documents together. Is there anything you wanted to say to start the meeting or officially?
Welcome.
Start the session?
That's all I got for now.
All right. All right. So board members, you have an assignment up on the board, so if you can work on that between now and the second part of our meeting. We get a break. We'll take a couple of break spots along the way here. But if everybody wants to grab your three-ring binder, we're going to just take a look at your handbook. If you recall, we developed the board handbook a couple of years ago just because we didn't formally have one in place. And so now that we have one, we also have to update it periodically.
We have a lot of stuff in there.
We do have a lot of stuff in there. Thank you for noticing. And first of all, just kind of a good reminder to everybody is at the front here in your left-hand cover, just good advice, good things to remember as we start the year together. And then we'll just kind of go through each section. We're not going to spend time on everything in it unless there's something that you want to stop and ask questions about. So the first part of the board handbook is just public schools in South Dakota and some specific language that's in the South Dakota codified law that you might want to refer to at times. You can look it up, of course, online, but we also put it in here about the role of the board and management by the school board. Second one is also about being a board member, the makeup of the board, conflicts of interest, reminders against acting as an individual rather than a body, what happens if we happen to have a vacancy kind of midstream. So lots of interesting, wonderful things there. Also talks about the meeting itself, open meetings law, as you know, you're very familiar with that, which is why we're recording, and the ability for the public to comment at the right times. And then a good review about executive session. And as you know, Brett always weighs in on that. We try to use those sparingly, but we are able to use executive sessions for the reasons listed underneath that. So those are just kind of the nuts and bolts things about being a board member and our actual meetings. In Chapter Three, this again just goes into roles and responsibilities. And one of the things that we'll touch on this afternoon is if you look on page 19 in that section about using your expertise, we'll talk about that, the strengths of board members and the unique skills that you have, maybe because of your profession, your experience, your longevity, all of those things. So we'll spend a little bit of time on that. Couple pages in there from the associated school boards about board participation. All right. Section Four is working with each other and working with me and the relationship of the board to the superintendent, me being your primary employee that you evaluate, that you work with as kind of the bridge to the district and how that looks when you choose somebody new. So just putting that in there because we may need it at some point. But good reminders there. The next one is on policy development. And we, as you know, have a process in place for how we review our policies. Also, if there's a policy that a board member thinks should be considered or created, you can always bring that up through the policy committee and make a recommendation that then the whole board would consider if there's something we feel like we're missing, just like staff or Brett may do from us to the board. You've seen both versions of that over time. We do have the list of all of the policies in there just by letter, which is just kind of a quick way of referring to that. You can also look them up through Quorum. But sometimes it's nice just to have a hard copy to go and look for the title that you're looking for, so you speed up the process of searching for it in Quorum. And it just is a good reminder to all of us of the breadth and depth of the policies that we have. There would be, we would be hard pressed to find a situation where we didn't have a policy that probably addresses it, like it or not. Okay, then, the sixth section just goes into some good information about student achievement, our state accountability requirements, and our requirements with the state. This year, we have accreditation, and so that'll be a process that goes throughout the year. Teresa, do you want to remind us of the timelines for that?
So Becky, now we're through all the different components of accreditation and our desk review is February 15th. So we have to tell probably a couple of weeks before then to make sure all the information's in by the end of January and then we'll go through that.
And we'll have updates on that and then we'll have a final report from that review. Super fun. All right. Questions so far on any of those where you want to stop and mention anything or discuss anything? Otherwise, we'll keep rolling. All right. Chapter Seven is on public relations. And this is kind of a nice progression through this. It talks about relationships between board members, what to do if you butt heads or disagree on something, talks about the board and superintendent relationship, and then your relationship with staff. And as you know, the board here in Sioux Falls primarily works between me or one of the team members at the table to kind of ask questions rather than emailing people directly. Sometimes we have familiarity with people, but when they get an email from a board member, it can be kind of disconcerting. They may wonder if they should answer or just keeping you in that good, healthy board governance role helps that we have just good, clear processes for how you get questions answered. And you guys have always been really good about that. It's also been nice to have Let's Talk so that when people have a question, you can direct them to the mechanism that our district has for them to get a question answered or to find the resource they need. With Let's Talk, we now have that for all of our buildings, too. So it used to just come primarily to IPC people, and now buildings are answering their own questions and it's really working well. It cuts down on the traffic kind of that central office gets. Sometimes we coach them in a response, and it also gives us a good idea of, you know, kind of the types of questions that we're getting across the district. That's how Let's Talk is designed, is to kind of let you know, hey, a lot of people are asking about this. This time of year, it's things like bus apps and before school starts, registration, and when does something start? And it's just a nice step to remove to just be able to go directly to the building. So that's been working well.
So a quick question on that. Is there an option, because I don't ever use Let's Talk. So is there an option for them to select the school within that and then it just goes to the school? Or does it come to IPC and it gets routed to them?
Nope. Now it goes directly to the school. Yeah. We used to go get the answer, put it back in, or we had a couple of people pilot it. Yep. And then there's categories within each school location. So if it's counseling or activities or some of the other ones that are under there, but quite a few options work for if they're interested in working at a particular school. Then we go on to negotiations and hiring. Whoops. And we don't currently have any groups negotiating. Becky, do we have any groups up this year?
Not this year. We are wrapping up some things with education assistance right now, but...
So that one is in there just for some best practices and every district is a little different in how they do negotiations, but good reminders in there. And then reminders about external relationships because you are the people in the community that are elected officials for representing our community to the school district. And knowing that our community values are public schools, you're critical in being the liaisons to how that is perceived in your personal and public lives as well as when you're out and about. That's just the joy of public service is it's public. So always be thinking about how you are representing the district out in your regular lives. Then we've got communication. And as you know, we look to Deanne for a lot of our communication needs. And if you have a question or you think something should be pushed or you see something in communications that don't look quite right, we always want all of your eyes kind of on how we do that. But we also want you to be able to speak to the initiatives of the district, the vision, the mission. And that's partly why we'll review the district priorities this afternoon, is that we want to make sure that you have those well in hand as you talk with community members and in your circles. We've had as an initiative our community conversations over the last couple of years. And this year, we'll continue to do those, but now that moves into the CLC structure. And so we'll talk about that a little bit as we go through our district priorities. But that mechanism of having community conversations will be right now in our schools for the most part unless we have some specific things that we want to discuss, boundaries, bonds, you know, some of those big things would still be a whole district discussion. But we'll kind of talk about the intent of that structure. If you are responding to someone, you can always get help if you're not sure of the answer or you need some contextual information. Sometimes it's good to have numbers or good reminders. You can go refer back to things that have been presented at a board meeting in Quorum or we can go and grab those things for you. We were just talking about it the other day in Don Marie's one-on-one because she wasn't here during the whole bond process. And what were some of those documents that were used? And so we can always add context for things. And then media relations, as you know, if you're asked to be on radio, TV, do an interview, any of those things, we always just kind of like to know so that everybody's on the same page. And then we can make sure some of those central messages that we're trying to make sure we convey in as many places as possible are heard. So for instance, I'm on the radio Wednesday, and so the things that I'll talk about are the things that we'll probably talk about when we're at Rotary and when I was on TV last week. And so it's just good to have continuity in those markets. Yeah. All right. Questions about communication? Okay. Next one, there's just a page, strategic planning. And as we talk about it in our district, it's our district priorities. We've moved kind of to that year-over-year, more kind of living, breathing document than a three- or a five-year plan that then doesn't get changed for a number of years. And that seems to be working well. That flows into our department plans, our individual goals, and right out into our school improvement plans. So that PDSA model is kind of our anchor. All right. Next is just some information that we put in on budgeting, just some basic terms, the fund numbers, just so you're familiar with those. Or if you have a question, you go back to look at something from a board meeting and think, what was Todd talking about? There's at least one spot you can start. There's also, you know, the full budgets and everything online. And so if you want to refer to historical documents, I know we just love going back and pulling up old budgets and reviewing just for fun. I'm joking. So those are good things to have in there just for information. Advocacy, some guidelines for working with legislators. And of course, we always want to know if we're having specific contact with area legislators because we want to make sure that we're all on the same page with what we are thinking about for the legislative session. And we'll go over our timeline kind of for that in a little bit. But where this really comes in is when we're actually in session, if we are communicating with them, if we're in hearings, if we're working on a specific initiative that we've asked somebody to carry or any version of that. Sometimes it plays in at the federal level when we're contacting our federal representatives, but, you know, it's just some good general guidelines for how the board operates with the legislators and during the session. All right. Section 11 has one page because Becky's gone through some of this with you, but we don't have anything in here specifically. Becky, anything that you want to say specifically about human resources?
Well, you got a great introduction to kind of what we've been going to be working on when we did the staff wrap-up. It's always that recruitment, that retention piece, which is so important and it seems like it's ever-changing and something that you really have to stay on, stay on top of. So that's what you'll see a lot of HR doing at this point, figuring out ways to build the professional capacity of our staff, helping them to continue to feel valued. And then also, as we bring aboard more staff, getting them involved in that onboarding. And so everyone's got a go-to person at work that just collectively makes it a great place to work for when you feel like you're needed and you want.
There's a line on there just about unions. We always want to make sure that the board functions as a whole whenever we're working with our union partners and making sure that we're staying in that healthy role so that when we do have things pop up, the board is able to act as the board should if it's hearings or if it's a union issue, maybe an MOU, any number of things that can come up. It just keeps you in a good lane so that those relationships are well-preserved. We meet monthly with Tim Eckert. I meet kind of quarterly with Tim group. Yeah. Jeff Crater and I meet with him. Becky and Jeff meet regularly with that group as a whole. And then we meet periodically with secretaries, EAs, and those are kind of the primary groups that we have the most contact with. So that's that. Code of Ethics, we just popped in so that you are aware of those if anybody refers to those. We have a couple of code of ethics. One is obligations of students and then obligations to the public and then to our profession. And so I just think it's good for you to see the language that goes with that. We ask people to review those at the building level as well. Both administrators and teachers are included in those. Anything else to say about code of ethics? Becky, you review that at the point of hire?
We do. We talked about that at the point of hire and then, of course, annually, it's going to happen as well.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Then we've got ASBSD, just some of their information that's specific to that organization if you're interested in what they offer and what their role is typically with boards. And then Chapter 13 is regulatory organizations, the professional practices, commissions, and the professional standards, and then South Dakota High School Activities Association. And then we've got in Section 14, our org charts, if you want to just open up that real quick. We usually put an updated version of this in for you every year. Not a lot of changes, but always a work in progress because we have changes of one kind or another every year. So if you want to just take a minute, look at that, see if you have any questions. There are a few names on there that maybe you haven't met yet, but I'm sure you'll see them one place or the other.
There aren't any names.
Hmm?
There aren't any.
Just position us.
The name document will be there.
Okay. Oh. I found a different one in my... No names, never mind. Okay. Then in the appendices, just your oath of office and your meeting agenda items, some common acronyms, terms, just typical handbooky stuff, and then some actual policies in the back about your specific board roles and policies from our own policies. We've got phone numbers back there. And then you all got your plastic card today with kind of your quick list should you need those. So you can put that in your badge holder if you want to. What? Sorry. Somebody's... Musical foot. All right. So that's your very exciting handbook.
With names is after that.
Oh, okay.
In Seventeen. At the last page of Seventeen is the org chart with names.
Questions or comments about any of those things in there? Just a couple of things that Carly and I talked about. Feel free to weigh in on this. Just with communications, just a reminder that during times when you are all emailed as a board, typically, board members don't respond with board members copied because that violates open meetings laws. And so you can respond individually to a person. But one of the most important things is that if you respond, that you would typically CC me or the board president, just so people know if there's been a response sent. Sometimes people will email each of you individually the same thing. Sometimes people email you all at one time. Sometimes they've sent staff the same email and it's just kind of however many people they can find. And so we just want to be cautious about the reply all. There are also times where it may be appropriate for you to turn on your auto-response so that people either can get a reply on a particular topic that's, you know, pretty prevalent at the time, or it gives you some time if your inbox is backing up to get back to people. Anything that you want to share maybe too with Don Marie, what's worked for you, tips and tricks with email or kind of things that have worked well as you've started to field those as a new board member?
I've always had auto-response on. And I usually, because topics can vary from, you know, person to person, obviously what's of interest to them, I usually just remind them that Let's Talk is available to them and I have a link to that. I think I too have also, because I don't know about anybody else, but I don't check my district email every day. It's nearly impossible with everything else. But, I mean, I check it every few days. So any media requests, I also put a link in that if it's a media request, then to go to Deanne. Or I think we have a link or something for that. So that's, that's something I've done for years just because, you know, you can't respond right away. And sometimes you get a media request and they're like, can you meet us up too? And talk about this. And it's like, I'm sorry I didn't see your email until today, when you sent it yesterday. So that's just something I've done that's worked pretty well.
Typically, also, if something has been mailed to the full board, the assumption is that the board president will respond. And then we'll let the other board members know that they'll respond on behalf of the board if there's a response warranted. And I'm glad you mentioned, we do have a media link where we ask media to make a formal request so that we know what information they're looking for, who the right person to connect them with, and then we can schedule those interviews so that our communications team knows about it. And that's worked well. So that's a good point.
And that's what I use. I don't give them Dan's. I use that media link.
Yeah. Good. Other thoughts?
I don't have the links, which I should, but I also have an out-of-office just so that people aren't expecting that it's managed like daily and get a response right away. So just, I usually, I think mine says something like, I check it once a week just to set expectations of timeframe because, like, yeah, I have a ton of emails.
We have full-time jobs and we have kids and other responsibilities.
I do try to respond. And there's times where, you know, like I can, like you said, I can see that we were all included and there are times where I only know that I got it. So then sometimes I'll reach out to Dr. Stavum and say, did you also get this email? Like, is somebody already responding? Because again, we want the message to be the same because there's, the answer should be the same. And so if somebody else has already handled it or it's been directed to whoever it needs to be, then I trust that that's going to be handled and I don't need to do anything further. So it's helpful if you notice that you're the only one on it, that maybe you reach out to say, hey, did you also get this? Because they may know you from school or they may know you from another organization or something, and so they feel like they should reach out to you, but you also may not be the right person who has all of the information, just like I don't have all the information. So it's good to kind of route those back to either myself or Dr. Stavum just so that we can get accurate information out there. It's really hard to backtrack when something, either incomplete or incorrect, goes out because that's going to get spread and none of us want that. So I think the more we can kind of route that through each other is helpful.
We have that just amongst our team. Dr. Noel will get something, Dr. Boyson will get it, all get it. And we've all gotten the same one, which is why we try to respond through Let's Talk because then we can see, or we can see if there's already been previous discussions about something or a question has been answered, or if we answered somebody else the same answer, then we can go get that. So we have the information right there and we don't have to recreate it. So that's, that's a helpful tool. Okay. Good. Anything else on those topics?
And I think this is just me, just going back to emails. I think that it can get very overwhelming responding to every single email that you get. And sometimes you get an email that doesn't warrant a response. They're just venting, they don't ask you for anything, and I think it's okay to just let those go, you know, take some things off your plate.
Yeah. I mean, it's a rare occurrence when we get kind of a big flurry, but every now and then, you know, COVID was a big flurry and kind of an ongoingness to it depending on conditions. Other things come up situationally, so we'll deal with those as they come up. But it's good just to kind of have a sense of how things flow before we get to those times. Okay. So if you would, if everybody would just go call up Quorum, we just wanted to...
What's the Wi-Fi password?
It should just get you on.
If you look at the SDM one, then you can...
Yeah, that one has the password. We just want to look at a couple of things with... We just want to look at a couple of things with you. And make sure we're all kind of seeing things the same way. Jenna's been with us now for a while, but we're all still, you know, kind of learning Quorum as we go, and, and want to make sure that everybody is able to get what they need. One of the first things that I want to make sure you're all looking at in the same way when you first get onto your Quorum page is under where it says "Meetings and Agendas." I want you all to get there first.
I'm, I know what I'm doing, I just am not a very Apple-friendly person.
I know I'm, I spoke another language for two years on a PC, so I get it. Okay, I'm sorry, what were we looking for? We should just look into the left-hand column under in Quorum, and I can put it up over here, too. If you want to look up here. When you log in, one of the things that I asked Jenna to do is, on that left-hand side, as you look at it, I know that's one of the first places that we often look, just for upcoming dates, and so you won't see everything there, so I want to make sure that you're also knowing that you can click on Additional Meetings, which is where you see the full list. We're working with Quorum to try and get this in reverse order. I don't know why it can't do that, but it can't right now. So you know that that's one of the places, and then you can also go under your Meetings tabs, and find out what the most recent meeting is. You can look under your documents here for the agendas and the attachments, and you've got all of those capabilities under there. But when you get to that homepage, I just want to make sure you know, this isn't all of them, but we're trying to make it roll kind of a couple months ahead. I can have her take off some more, so that September shows up here. You also have your months here, where you should have your meetings here. And then, you have the STC side of that, so you're kind of managing two Quorum platforms over here, and you know that. So I think it shows up for you over here as STC.
Yeah, if you hover over the Sioux Falls School District, and you click on that...
Yeah, we have a down arrow.
You can toggle between the two.
Yep, so, just want to make sure that you're all looking at these dates. Mine looks a little different because of dashboards.
And just for STC, you know, we have worked hard with, and so has Andrea, we know, in supporting Vicki and getting documents posted, similarly with Southeast Tech, so that we can kind of have, know that one place to really look at everything, so.
It's been nice to have Quorum, and I think it helps just direct everything kind of through one spot, and hopefully, as you need historical reports, or, you know, data that we've looked at maybe the year before, or you're trying to remember what was enrollment last year, when our enrollment report's coming up, or just things like that, this is always your first stop for going back and looking at other documents. How we kind of store those documents, there's historical documents, and then there's archived documents, and we're trying to make sure that those are placed in the right spots, so that we have the right searchability. When you go to search for documents, or if you go up to your search function, if you type in a keyword, there are some choices that you have, if you want an agenda item, if you want a document, what is it that you're really looking for that helps you bring up the right, the right thing. Under your documents, you can also search for policies, that's where they're located. So this is, this is the go-to place to try and get your information as easily as possible, and then this is where the searchability comes in. Questions about Quorum, just as you're navigating it, just for meeting purposes, or, you know, finding things? One of our former board members loved it more than anybody for searching for documents, which is good, because that helped us as we were bringing it onboard, but we just want to make sure that everybody is navigating it still when it's somewhat new.
Yeah, I think I would just add, the calendar is super helpful. The limitation is, is that it really is just our meetings that we all share, so, like, your one-on-ones aren't going to be on there, or any of your committee meetings that you have aren't going to be on here, and so this is kind of your overview, but then we all have to manage our own meetings besides that, so it's a two-stop shop. You can go here and get these, and then you have to go to your personal calendar, but...
Andrea, do you want to talk about that, just in terms of reminders for how you push out meeting information, or how Jenna pushes things out?
Each Friday, when we have the Memo from the Superintendent, there's a document that I also attach to that, and that's the other events that you may or may not attend. And then, if you, after that, we have a document, it's the Boardwork Session, and then the Board Meeting Topics. So those three go out as it's added.
If there are other things that you need, feel free to let us know, or I know some of you have gotten help with just how it flows to your phone, or your devices, or your personal calendars, our tech people can help or guide if you need it to show up and pop up a little differently.
One, I thought, at one point, I might have seen where Andrea, you might have posted if someone wasn't going to attend, like, wasn't going to be in attendance for anything.
That is on doubt. Boardwork, Board, uh, Meeting Dates and Minutes document, you put it underneath the date.
Okay.
And in the smaller part.
Yeah, okay.
We'll look at that document in a minute, and so if there's stuff you know, we can put that on today, or you can just note it, and if something's not correct anymore on there, too, we can change that at any time. Those are all live documents that we adjust as we need to. Okay, anything else with Quorum? Just got to remember your password. That's the trick. Okay, well, then, let's go to the Work Session. Let's do Board Meetings and Board Reports first, and I'm going to be rude and put my back to you, so I can turn it over. All right, so here's our Google Doc, where we've got our reports, and we can already cross off one line. Tonight, we have Safe and Secure. All right, so tonight, we have Safe and Secure Schools with Dave Osterquist. Todd will do the budget wrap-up. So what we really wanted to do was just kind of look out and ahead a little bit, and make this a little bit bigger, so that we can make any adjustments.
You clicked on Sheet Six instead of...
Okay, so, the way we have our budget, or our board reports, kind of lined up on here, is so that throughout the course of the year, we hit the different things associated with our district priorities. And so, if the board wants a particular report, and you don't see it on here, we can add it at any time during the year, but we do try and kind of get things pre-scheduled, so that we know when they're going to be for the people who are presenting them. And sometimes, in our meetings, it's like, "Hey, let's have a board report on that," and then people smile and say, "Sure," and then they grumble as they leave the meeting and say, "Rr, why did she do that?" But most of the time, we have them scheduled ahead of time. So we've got typical things, like in September, our initial enrollment report, and then we'll have an update from Allison Strach from the Foundation. We've done that in years past. That's been kind of a good time for her to let us know what's happening, and this year is their, what, year?
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth year, is it?
Wow.
Yeah, so she'll have some things related to that, I'm sure. Post-secondary report is Kristin Granogar. Teresa, do you want to remind us what's all part of that?
Yep, post-secondary report is that enrollment into post-secondary, so we record out the numbers of students, and then duration to completion, how many complete in four years, how many complete in six years, who goes into a three-year institution.
Okay, then, after that, we've got the actual official fall enrollment, that gives us the final count that we use for the year.
And that's on a different date, right? Just to note the date?
Yes, that moved from the ninth to the 11th, because that Monday being off. Yep, good point. Then, the 23rd, we have our academic report, once we've gotten the state report card data. It's also when we give the demographics report, the makeup kind of of that enrollment, that we went through the meeting before, and then a quarterly financial report from Todd. And Todd, remind me, last year, did we keep those quarterly reports, or did we switch?
Ta-da.
Yep.
Ta-da.
Ta-da. Yeah, because we all agree to that. Then, in November, we start the budget process, and then we typically vote to confirm the legislative positions or platform of the district. That's usually if we have one or two things that are going to be our intentional areas of focus. November, we've got AP and Juul Credit, and Budget Guidelines, that continues us on the budget process. In December, we asked Rebecca to be ready with, sorry, after-school programming update, because by then, we'll be kind of mid-year with standing up our CLC model, and then our Continue to Learn update, that's still required because of our extra dollars with COVID. Questions up through December?
What's in the column that's empty? That one? Yeah, what's there?
That is Staff Excellence, so that's our staffing update, mainly things within HR, onboarding, some of those kind of beginning and end of the year, typically in that column. Okay, then, we'll do a mid-year retreat, which is when the board kind of weighs in on future budget items that you might be interested in. We may give you some overview of what things are looking like with projections, however they come in with enrollment, or finances the next year. It's just a touch base timer for the board. And then, starting in January, we'll start with the legislative updates, and setting the school board election, that will come up in May. And Todd, do you want to remind us what terms are up?
Plurks.
And mine?
M Ks.
And those will be two-year, correct?
Yes.
Okay, because of moving to the new schedule. Okay, then in January, we'll keep going with the legislative update and budget report. We have some open slots here that we have not filled in yet, because we wanted to see if there was anything specific you wanted, but we still have some places here where we can put in some more reports as needed. We have Spanish Immersion Program update in February. We'll stay with the legislative ones here during the session. And then, Teresa, do you want to talk about the Fine Arts Curriculum Adoption?
Yep, so Fine Arts will finish up during the second year of their curriculum study, so we'll come to the board in April with that, with all the curriculum that we're adopting in the visual and fine and performing arts, and that curriculum is all for the board.
And then, the rest is the legislative season wrap-up, the public hearing for the budget, and then the election canvas for that process. So that's what we've got on there so far, which is kind of in keeping with last year. We'll think of some more things during the year, but if there are other specific topics that you want us to report out on, we can sure do that, and some things might come to mind as we go through our district priorities. So you might make a note of something, or you say, "Oh, we haven't heard something on that for a while." That might be a good board report, then we can consider that. All right, then, let's look at the Work Session. Cross this one out, I'll cross it out right now, clarity. All right, so on September 6th, we'll have a Work Session for Future Facilities, and kind of the timeline for adjusting projects and programming. Jamie, you want to say just a little bit about that?
The facilities programming, we'll give an update on that, of some of the main areas that we're, you'll be looking forward to on some timelines. There's, obviously, the opening of the elementary school, and the timeline that'll go along with that, and we'll go through that with you in greater detail. A couple other smaller items, the community campus with, you know, the enlargement of that program, because we moved some of the program that we had outsourced back into the district, and so really looking at community campus and expansion there. Looking at things with the Spanish Immersion Program, and how that continues to grow, the new school that will eventually come down the road, Elementary, to show a little bit of that land area that we brought in from Lennox. So just kind of an overview of some of those things that we've been talking about, to give you a little bit of a long-term vision of some of the things that we are working on.
We do not have a particular topic on October 4th, so you can decide if we want to keep that date on there. We do have a board meeting that next week. Then, we've got ASBSD Legislative Position Review, where we'll have the discussions related to what your priorities may emerge as, and then, again, we can confirm that legislative platform and any discussions that we want to have with that. We kind of had those two things in there last time, ahead of, I believe, voting on that in December. Let's just double-check that. Got that here. We'll look at our timeline, we may need to adjust that just a little bit. I think this was so that if there were other things or work that needed to be done, or progress made with that legislature that we can discuss. We, right now, have the third canceled, so no meeting there potentially, and we moved the 14th, because there's typically a legislative event in PEAR, where all of the superintendents go, and then I missed that meeting, so we looked at moving that. Then, the 6th is another update on the facilities and programming timeline, and then we'll also have the new elementary underway. And then, we sort of have penciled in a first budget Work Session and a second budget Work Session on the 27th. That's one thing the board can decide if you want to keep that way. We changed it a few years ago to add two, and so that's up to you, if you want to leave it that way, and then we still have two spots open here, if we want to add something during the course of the year. Questions about the Work Session dates? And again, if we go through district priorities, and you see something that we want to have more discussion on, we certainly can. Okay? Then, we'll switch gears here. This is just a quick overview of the legislative planning calendar. A couple years ago, I got this together, so that we can all kind of see the roadmap to the session, and so this just kind of outlines the items for each month, and then I go in and check it when we're done, just to kind of keep us on schedule. So in... So in August, this is following up from the prior year. If there is anything that we want to be working on, sometimes there's carryover from one session to the other, just in terms of something not going that we want to either keep working on or something new that emerges. And we're doing this today, establishing our timeline. And then we'll want to make sure that we have a board member designated for the legislative committee assignments. Then in September, we schedule the legislative breakfast and our one-on-one meetings with legislators. We meet with all of them up to that breakfast and then determine if we have some specific areas of interest along with other school districts around us. I pull our lobbyists group together just to kind of do an overview of the coming session and communication things. And then how we notify the board. And we changed some of that last year, so I don't anticipate that we'll change anything this year to our two documents that we had for review and then the public-facing one after the board has reviewed and we post our potential positions. And then you vote on those officially at the board meeting. October, we just continue that work with our lobbyists. We meet with SFA to see if there's anything in common that we are kind of looking at together. And then we establish your priorities and our platform. And then in December, we have a breakfast. Right now, we have that scheduled for December 12th. And then, once those priorities are finalized, we typically will distribute those. And then the fun begins. And so these are just kind of to-do items and dates to note for those last days for bills and resolutions. And Andrea, these are the updated dates, right?
Yes.
Okay. And then crossover day, the last day of the session, and then kind of looking ahead already to that next year. Then if anything happens during the session that we need to revise our policies or practices or any of our publications, we do that in May. And then sometimes we get asked to weigh in on things with legislators and then we try and get that date set next July for the following year. People's calendars fill up fast. Anything with kind of the overview of this? Doesn't mean that we can't nudge one month to the other, but it just keeps us on track in making sure that we're ready for the session. Anything with that? Questions, comments? Typically, what I've done then is just put an update to the board to take a look, but largely I use this with the board president, just to show that we've checked the boxes and that we're on track for getting things done. We've done this now for a few years, so we're pretty on track.
And I would just say, when the one-on-one meetings with legislators happens, a lot of times, like Dr. Stavon will ask, you know, two of us to sit in so that we can just get to know them as well and we maybe have a point that we want to bring up or emphasize. And it's good for them to not just talk to admin, but to actually talk to us as well. So as schedules allow, if you're interested in doing something like that, we can try to.
Andrea will put that out to the board and sometimes nobody says yes and sometimes everybody does and then she'll reach out to kind of.
Balance it out.
Yep. And so it's worked out really well. We typically have somebody at all of them and that's nice. Then I write up usually just a little bit of a summary of, we cover basically the same thing each time so that everybody has the same information. And then we kind of get a little taste of anything that they're thinking about or interested in. So it's worked well.
Yep.
Okay, just have to be careful who we ask to carry bills. Yes. Yes, very strategic work sometimes and sometimes things happen during the session that is completely out of our control that impacts other things. So we never know what a session will bring. Okay. With that, let's take a short break and then we'll come back and just go through the updated district priorities. And then we'll have another break and then we'll do some board development after that. So it's 2:00. Let's.
Can you put her homework back up there too?
I can put your homework back up, yeah. So let's do, I don't know, 10, 15 minutes or so and your homework is back up.
Thanks.
Okay, so we move on to our district priorities. This is the webpage that is a fixture on our district page. It's under our district tab right here. You can only direct people to it. And then the red button gets you to the actual document. Diane was just updating some things even as of last week. But what we wanted to do is just go through it today and highlight some of the things in each section. There are some things that haven't changed at all and there's a few things that are just a little bit different this year, so we wanted to make sure you were aware. Typically, we have a nice glossy version made, but last year we made less of them than we did the first year that we rolled this out. If you're ever going to speak at an event, like I'll take them sometimes if I'm speaking to leadership South Dakota, leadership Sioux Falls, or we did have kind of the fold-out ones that are still accurate with the different areas that are just a little pocket size. Or if you just want a couple to leave somewhere where you're going, we can get those to you. But we're making fewer of those just because people tend to look at it online. So with that, we have the new lineup of our school board up here. And there are beautiful photos. We have the same kind of guiding document information here and then we get to academic success. So Teresa, I'm going to turn it over to you to go through your section.
All right, thank you. Academic success. So we have three initiatives this year and it focuses on MTSS, which includes PBIS, multiple learning pathways for students connecting to that future readiness, and then targeted professional learning alignment with our district priorities. So I'll talk about a few things in each one of those areas. So MTSS this year, this is our third year with MTSS and we're really focused on that core tier-one instruction, meaning that classroom instruction at the foundational level, making sure every student gets that academic support. And then continue to look at how do we support buildings and building tools for their problem-solving teams? So if they have some questions, we've built those tools all in Infinite Canvas. And so that's a one-stop shop for them to go in and start to keep some information. So that way, if that child moves across the district, we have that information. So that's all in Tableau. So really that data visualization they've also created in there, Doug and Nicole and their team at IT, and that's been a great support for our buildings team, our building team, and we'll continue with that. PBIS, we're in year two. And PBIS with year two is really focused on class-wide. And so class-wide is really the science of behavior and how do we help support teachers in that classroom with that positive behavioral interventions and support. So we have six sessions and it's focused on classroom routines, encouraging appropriate behavior, your physical environment, and your continuum of response. And so all buildings will have that throughout this year to help build their skills and supports within the classroom. So that's year two of PBIS.
And I'm going to stop you before you go to the next one. Those two things have been huge in our district. And so while those are just kind of bulleted on here, we'll go through a little bit more underneath the other sections. But that's something that we've started to really hear bear fruit. And it's systems, it's just really good systems. But when we hear our teams and the problem-solving and the programming that happens for our students, these things have been really critical foundations that we've strengthened over the last couple of years. And multiple teams have been part of that, but Dr. Boyes in the area oversees that. Dr. Fenton coming to our district when she did two years ago was critical because she had been a statewide trainer and that was quantum leaps. And so now we continue deepening with that. We had a really good keynote at the Ignite conference and just keep kind of feeding that whole aspect of using our systems well for making instructional behavioral and placement decisions. But this has been an exciting one. Good results. Dr. Noel, did you want to say something?
Nope.
Okay, the next one is college and career readiness. So really focused on pathways and how do we help support students with different pathways across the district, getting them ready. And so I really chose some of our major pathways to highlight for you today. So biomedical, you know, you think about where do you hear biomedical? Well, we have biomedical in Sioux Falls. We have the medical pathway, so the LPN pathway. We have three students enrolled in that LPN pathway this fall and we have two more for next spring. And that's funded by the Development Foundation. They give a chunk of money every year to help support those courses for those kids. We have human body systems, medical interventions, principles of biomed forensics. That's new at all buildings this year. Health careers, again, and with health careers, we have Avera Academy and Classroom to Careers that support, and that's, Avera supports Avera Academy, of course, and Classroom to Careers is supported by Sandberg in conjunction with the courses out at STC. So that's our biomedical pathway. And then we have STC, getting the SIMS lab will be a really nice addition that we hope our kids will be able to also then be able to participate since STC did get my dream to come true because they bought the Zeal building and we didn't. But they're using it for the things that we talked about once upon a time, which is just continuing that kind of high-tech version of healthcare. And then another pathway is engineering and computer science. So we have our new science curriculum. That's implemented this year and that's hands-on engineering practices at the elementary and middle school level. So really getting some deeper learning and very excited to start to see some of that come true as we visit classrooms. We have aerospace and aviation and the grant that CTE received for those simulators, you know, second in the state to receive that level of aviation equipment. And other than SDSU, nobody else has that. Computer science, we received a STEM grant from the state for our elementary libraries and they're going to work, they've really lined that out. So each grade level has some work within that science and technology and coding. So B-bots at kindergarten, we have appliance at first, second, third are robots, fourth grade's makey-makey, and fifth grade's scratch. And so really working on coding and robots and really get them launched. And the librarians are very excited about how they put that in that space. And so we'll bring some information to you and highlight that maybe as a good news report as we go on. And then at high school, we added animation and game design. And so those were added at the high school level, new for them this year. And then we have digital electronics, which is technology and communication, digital filmmaking, and digital music. So some of the things that, you know, how do they fit in that pathway and help get kids' exposure and so they get to know what that career focus could be for them. And the ag pathway, we have the elementary buildings working with ag experience, Sioux Falls Ag Experience, and then high school ag courses. Again, this is our second year, so continue to develop that in the courses and see how that rolls out for all those students.
I was just going to say, and this is obviously, I'm looking at it from the lens of me being a parent, and I feel like we have gotten a lot better in middle school of trying to like introduce different, you know, like exposure to different things, whether it's through CTE or, I keep hearing these amazing things from the state that's offering these camps that seventh and eighth graders can go to for free at our state universities. And I know several people who have sent their kids and have had just rave reviews and I think that's awesome. I'm just wondering, like, what are we doing for our ninth and 10th graders? Because I feel like for my own daughter, who's a junior now, she kind of missed out on some of the CTE stuff and then there's not really a lot, I don't know. Well, or just kind of like exposure to a variety, like she has no idea and I'm sure that she's not alone with other people who don't know what they want to do. And so unless, I feel like unless I as a parent like try to arrange things, I'm not really sure how else to kind of get her, I mean, she's taking forensic, she's taking some of the new classes, which is awesome. I'm just trying to think of like from a career readiness.
You know, because we, as ninth graders, correct me if I'm wrong, but they go to CTE during, in spring.
I was going to say testing, I think, right? When junior, junior testing maybe?
And as middle schoolers, probably more intentionally than they maybe once did.
Yeah.
And trying to get them all on campuses. I believe they have that opportunity to visit college campuses.
They do.
Ninth graders?
Yeah.
And so there's, but again, how do you, more exposure for their careers?
Yeah.
And they use Zello, which is part of the, they developed their personal learning plans where they can go in and do that interest inventory.
Is that like the old South Dakota My Life?
Yep, exactly. It is South Dakota My Life.
Yeah, when they tell you that you should be a taxidermist.
Yeah.
Still. That wasn't me. And it certainly did not apply to my kid, but.
Yeah.
But that's good feedback, Carly, because we can use that in, Renee Owens, our K-12 career counselor. I mean, how can we take that feedback and help to.
Yeah, and I don't, usually I like to make suggestions and I don't have any off the top of my head, but I just, I feel like there's probably more. Because like as a ninth grader, you can't usually go to CTE, you know, because you have to be a 10th grader normally to be able to go take classes there. And so there's just kind of that bubble of, and then I feel like by the time you're a junior, everyone assumes that you know what you want to do and you know where you want to go and you've already, you know what I mean? And so there's like this, you're taking the, are you taking the ACT or are you doing all these things? And there's a kind of a pressure around that when maybe you haven't had as many opportunities. I don't know. Again, just my own personal perception.
Quite a bit of a push to, because one thing we did here for quite a while with the counseling services is, you know, if we wait till they're ninth grade, it's too late until they're to 10th grade. So there's been a heavier push towards the middle school. And so that's probably why you do notice some of that more, some of the exploration things in the middle school. And when they get to the 10th grade, it is and it was South Dakota My Life and that's transformed now. But they still try to give them a lot of those opportunities, especially during the state testing, to get out and to see some of those groups. And then also with the academies specifically, they have some of those groups that go around and they give them an opportunity to see where some of the different things that they can be part of. Because each one of the schools has a goal of getting every kid involved in at least one of the activities. So they try to get them tied into activities. The class part of it though becomes harder, especially with some of those classes that you need some introductory course to.
Right.
To go to CT. A lot of them don't require an introductory course, but then they do try to get them over there to see the programs. But it does, you know, a lot of times they'll fill out interest inventories and then that helps to sign them up for which areas they're going to go see during that testing time.
Sure.
Specifically, they get a better introduction into whatever it may be.
Yeah.
And some try to fill that out to be with friends.
Right.
And that's a big draw at that point in time to try to make sure that they do it independently. But there's still things we could improve on there, but we have had a focus on moving into our middle school more.
And it could just be that my kid was in like that bubble of, you know what I mean?
Could be. Yeah, there's some transitions.
Mm-hmm.
Well, the other thing I was thinking about, we tried to make more visible too as part of the information given was what kind of a complete pathway picture is. And it may be that we need to look at where that's showcased and viewed again because that was one of the things that we heard early on was they aren't aware of it and they're not sure of the off-ramp or what's at my high school and what's at CTE and what's, you know, both maybe. So we might want to revisit that a little bit and see where those are.
Yeah.
That's one of the great advantages of the Sioux Falls School District and a disadvantage, we have so many opportunities for kids to get out there for things. I spoke to a teacher's group, retired teachers before coming over here and said that is the advantage of Sioux Falls School District, we have so many programs. But how do you get kids open to see some of those programs that they may have an interest in, but they just don't even know it?
Yeah.
And so it's a advantage, definitely. Disadvantage, the fact that we have to try to get them into situations where they see some of those things.
Yeah.
Is there still an option to earn elective credit for job shadows or was that?
There is.
Yeah.
The predominance of, you can get that at each one of the schools. The predominance of that will come at the Joe Foss building.
Yeah.
But each one of the schools, they will have the work for credit. It can run one of two ways. One, they can take it as an independent class that way or two, through the school store as part of elective, do they go through there as well? So yes, that's still available at each school.
Just for everybody's.
They try to also match up to do some, where students can go out and shadow.
Yeah, is it 35 hours is a half credit of elective credit?
It depends.
For job shadowing?
If you're at the homeschool or at the Joe Foss part of it.
Okay.
With the, with the job or the work for credit. Now, the shadowing piece, that's something that's a little more unique at Joe Foss.
Okay, I wasn't sure if that was district-wide or just.
They can still do a shadowing, but it's usually not as many hours as traditional school setting where they have a little more flexibility at the Joe Foss setting.
Okay.
Just for everybody's edification, we pulled up the website here. That's one thing that's helped make more things visible is with our new website platform. And so there's.
And so there's, you know, frequently asked questions, there's a ninth grade options button there that kind of shows everything that's out there. But then you can go in each one of the specific areas, we'll just click on biomedical, and you can look very specifically at what the courses are. And then I think each one of them has a student video now too, so that you can hear a student voice. We'll just watch a little bit of it, but it's nice when kids can talk with you about their experience.
I teach your biomedical sciences at the CTE Academy. It's a series of medical science classes, starting with principles of biomedical sciences. People call that one Biomed One. Then Human Body Systems is the second course, Biomed Two, followed by Medical Interventions, which is Biomed Three. I have students from all Sioux Falls High School and some surrounding schools and they all have.
With the, we're kind of learning like a fucking anatomy of the body, sort of like the bones. And then we went into like DNA and all that. And now we're down to like the muscles, we're learning about that.
I want to go into more experiment, science-y part of like health and science careers. And so it just sounded a lot more interesting. We do a lot.
So those are nice to have on each one of those. So we have been able to build that out, which is good.
So maybe, just as a random suggestion, maybe even doing a board report on some of those types of things to direct people to be able to go out and see those, especially since they've been updated with new videos and I think they're maybe more engaging than just going out and, you know, reading about it, but to actually be able to sit and watch a video, a short clip and see what they have, so.
Well, and I do, they have an open house out there, you know, at least once a year.
I feel like it's always conferences night?
I know, I agree. It's, it's, I.
So like to try to get there and go to conferences is really hard?
But they did, they sometimes offset those, so they're not on the same night as conferences.
Okay.
For that reason.
Sure.
Exactly, so that way they can.
Okay.
And for students, it's just, it is tricky to work in their traditional core classes and getting out there.
Yeah.
Sometimes, I'm just being really pragmatic because they have a lot to offer and.
Yeah.
We've talked about that, you know, what, at what point do you offer some other core classes because of how we have it scheduled with four high schools, you know, it's a lot to coordinate.
And then transportation time.
Yeah, and we're lucky that we can provide that, but, you know, if you think about the future of it, if we want to continue to build the enrollment out there, what else? I know in a past life, we had to start offering a couple of core content courses next to the CTE pathway courses so that kids could be out there a bigger chunk of time.
Like an English or like something that everybody has to take.
Outlay or something.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
All right, suggestions. Couple other things, cyber is another pathway. And so we have a partnership with the League of Innovative Schools and DSU Cyber Academy and really looking at how we support that need, that we know every business has a need for a cybersecurity specialist. And so middle school computer technology is working with the Ring Cyber Curriculum from DSU and that's new this year. And then high school, the DSU pathway really works on students getting that dual credit opportunity with DSU and then they can walk out with a certification and a security plus certification and that's, some of those things are new. So that's good for our students and our community. And then the last one is financial literacy. And as we look at that from elementary through high school, every elementary student has junior achievement and they bring in some of that financial literacy. Middle school has also had junior achievement, but something new is JA Finance Park. And so they'll have 13 lessons at that middle school level and then they'll finish out with that onsite financial park experience where they go in and there's a simulation and they give you a card and, or a computer actually give you an iPad and this is your per, this is your life. And now what choices they're going to make and you're going to visit the bank or rent an apartment or buy a house or buy a car or rent a car and all those good things. And so that will be new this year for our students and that will happen in the spring. And that's a big deal for JA too. We've been working on that for a couple of years to get Finance Park started and launched and is then going to be a statewide opportunity, we hope. There's, there's, you know, the physical place that they go to for kind of that ending experience and we're looking at mobile versions of that or at some point a permanent structure. Some places have kind of a permanent location for Finance Park. Very exciting.
And I can't think of what it's called, but is it like Market Day or something where, it's another organization, but where kids can.
Great Life sponsors that.
Yeah, kids can create, you know, and then they get to decide how much they're selling things for. And I think some of those hands-on things similar to the, yeah, where you know like I have to pay this much in rent and I have to pay this much. Like I think all of those things are just great for kids because they have no idea.
And we've had kids ask for more personal finance. Go figure that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's good. And then we finished off at high school with, you know, we have all our business courses, but Academy of Finance, which offers that USD credit and internship opportunities. So that's our pathways, intelligent career readiness. And my last area is professional learning for all staff. And our biggest lift this year has been the Canvas and Mastery Connect platform. So professional learning for our staff and our parents getting connected. So that will continue to train throughout the year with that, just making sure we're moving forward. And MTSS PBIS, again, that's another training for all staff throughout the year. And then I just wanted to highlight some of the teacher edu, things we do to promote teacher education. So this fall, we have 52 student teachers and we're working with 10 different universities. And we also work with a mentor program for our new teachers for their first and second year. And so nice, I didn't pull my numbers on that, sorry, I was going to bring those for you. And then we have the South Dakota Registered Teachers Apprenticeship Pathway, which is new. So working with the State Department of Ed to make sure that we have EAs and other people that want to go into teacher positions and they get the coursework and then when they get their degree, they get to do their student teaching. And then we have Dakota Dreams, which is Teacher Leadership Academy. And that is teachers that are currently employed that want other leadership opportunities. And so that's working with them. And then of course, we have our USD teacher internship program that we help support. Dr. Knoll works with EAs or other behavior specialists that want to go into teaching and then we, we do a cheap partnership with USD to get a $50 credit or class to get started in that program. So and, and then teacher pathways, I didn't even talk about that, but how many? 11 people we hired out of teacher pathways this year? So that's a, that's a great thing.
Yeah.
So.
And one last year after just three years.
Right. Yeah. Thank you AP. Dual credit. Yes. So that's academic success.
One other thought for a board report might be Canvas. I think that would be super helpful for parents. I know we just, I just got the email saying, here's how I set it up. I haven't done it yet, but I feel like the more we can talk and get parents engaged on that would be helpful too.
Yeah, we do have a let's talk button for Canvas and so just a few trickle in every day, but help, and that's really a parent help button and.
We wouldn't have a whole lot on the 11th, even if we wanted to plug that in quick. Is that two on Canvas?
Yeah.
I just think when it's something new, that it's really helpful to like talk, 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 talk about it.
We have two boards on that.
Even for students too.
So maybe on the 20th.
Sure. And that's a, that's a move away from Google Classroom? Yep, so Schoology, you know, CSO at elementary, Schoology and Google Classroom. So it's streamlined, so if you had students at a couple of different levels, you had two different platforms to toggle in between and.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll plug that in first. And we don't let you plug in because I was erasing things. Not going to touch it. Okay. Other questions for Dr. Boyson?
Lot going on.
I think about everything we've learned, you know, the last three years, it's extensive, but hanging off.
Great to you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Awesome. Okay, Dr. Knoll, well-being.
So as we go through the well-being, you'll see some of the things that are in there that will, will duplicate or they, they go in tandem with the academic area per se with the multi-tiered systems of support. There's a side of that, and we did at one time have a labeled behavior, the other side academic, and we did away with that because really it all goes together into one as we're going through and working with the students and trying to figure out with our, our student success teams in the buildings as to what is the best intervention to help students. And some of those things are tier ones where it's every student will get the intervention and in some of which tier two where it's a select group and then obviously moves on from there. So parts of that with the multi-tiered systems of support in that third year, as Dr. Boyson has spoken on, and I won't duplicate that, PBIS being a significant portion of that as well. The other area that we look at, or the second area, supports for students, family and staff. And I'll highlight a few of those. You'll also see another one tonight as a good news report as we go in tonight with attendance and talk a little bit about that. The third area that we look at is, is some of those more intensive supports to meet the unique needs of students. And in a school district this size of almost 25,000 students, we have a gamut of needs that students will have. And so going through and trying to meet those in the final part does also work into that targeted professional development as well. And that is helping the, the teachers to be better equipped to be able to work with all students that are in their classrooms. And so as we go through the different areas, I'll start with the MTSS and I won't, Dr. Boyson, I already talked about the first two bullets who would be in this area. But the, the third one in there, or fourth one in there introduced the online utilization of the C-Stag Threat Assessment Model, and that's part of our safety enhancements that we have in working last year in a training for all admin. We also had many of our social workers and SROs and other staff that went through that training with the C-Stag training. And really the goal of that is to enhance our safety measures and to try to help and provide services to all students before we even get to a situation that would need safety intervention. And so it's being proactive on many of those things. It doesn't replace a discipline process or things like that, but it's hoping to keep students out of discipline. And so really, we can look at those things and have a group of staff members that talk about that as part of that support team within the building of how do we help students so they do not get to a situation that they would need some type of other intervention. And so that'll take effect. We did work with a couple pilot schools last year because there's some documentation, some forms you go through to see what is it this child may need and what's the best intervention for them. And we did make those all online now, so it's a little easier, seamless. And we really scripted it to meet the needs of Sioux Falls School District. So we took the national model and the training and then worked with multiple meetings at elementary, middle and high school and then made it electronic so it'll fit right into what we currently utilize. So staff won't have to go out and use something separate. But that is the C-Stag Threat Assessment Model that we will utilize. In the area of student and staff family supports, I did talk a little bit that you'll hear good news reports, I won't duplicate a lot of that right now, but that has to do with attendance and focusing back in on attendance again. And one of the recent webinars that a group I had together that we went through is, students were told for a few years, you know, in doubt, don't come to school. And that had to do a lot with COVID and things like that. And it's kind of become some of the mindset. And attendance across the nation has dropped off significantly and the state of South Dakota has dropped significantly. And, and we have seen that as well, where we have had a decline in the continual attendance and it's increased our number of students that are in more of that chronic range. And so we'll talk about that a little bit more. We have a heightened sense of that this year going across the board with attendance and a lot of things are automated to give that message, but we also know some of the greatest contacts are the personal contact with somebody and teacher contact was a big part of that, you know, a teacher calling and, and have that personal contact. But we've also got some individuals through grant money that we applied for that will be liaisons for specific schools and be able to have a personal contact and get kids to school. With our homeless population, we also, through grant process, purchased a couple vans. And so those are going to be in effect this fall that help us to offset a significant cost that we, we sometimes incur through the transportation. But we have two individuals through Estor Dollars of homeless, which was a separate pool of money that we've hired that will specifically work with homeless and then purchase those vans as well. And so that'll come in and since it's part of federal, we can utilize it for some other families as well. And some of those liaisons may be able to utilize those vans to be able to get some kids to school. We don't want it to be a consistent, their main source of getting to school, but we need to figure out methods in the meantime while we get them there of how we're going to get this child on a consistent basis to school. And so that's some, some of the stuff you'll hear about a little bit more tonight as we go through. We're also working in, under that area of student, staff and family supports, there's two things that are somewhat together. Established classes at the Community Engagement Center available for our Native American students, so we can build that connection. And the other part of it is they've completed, so we need to evaluate now the results of the recent Needs Assessment Survey for our Native American families and look at the appropriate actions for that. So they're working through that process now and working with that committee to see what are some of the steps that we will take to be able to help our Native American families feel more connected to the school and improve their attendance, you know, within the school. So those are a couple of things there that we are working on in that area.
Dr. Knoll, do you want to remind everybody where the Community Engagement Center is?
Yep.
The, just a brief reminder of the history?
Yep. And so the Community Engagement Center, we had looked at quite a few things at the Axton Park Building. And we started a few years ago with Joe Foss and trying to renovate that and to freshen up that program. We moved it away from Onbuzman and took that over and I would say that it was a much better product now of what we're serving. You know, students would really go there and sit in front of the computer and do the online. Now they still do some online classes, but there's so many other things we're doing with that, with our, our HECS classes, which is a shortened class where they condense that to get some of those credits that they need. We have some individuals that are, that are there, employed there to help them to go out and see things that they could be successful with in the community, to bring speakers in, a better relation with the CTE to get more kids over there. The next step in that was looking at what are other sources and resources we can have. So we have one room that's been converted over into our community resource room and our social workers know and they direct families there. And we also have our EL families that go there and that's where they'll do some of that intake there, so they become very familiar with that location. Busing is easier there. And so it's a one-stop shop area that we have social worker there that's supposed to be able to help if one person is full-time employed there. But to help them to get community resources, to help their child stay in school, to help them feel connected to the school and get what they need. And so that's housed right out of the corner of the Axton Park Building. And then the second phase of that is some things we worked on last year and continue this year is with the Axton Park Behavior Program and looking at that and changing some of those things. And we presented that a little over a year ago, but a lot of that was the, the mental health support that we want and put in place there. And we continue to grow that. We also put some different, we brought some individuals in to do some training so we'd have better consistency across the levels with, with discipline, with expectations, just with our processes that we go through there with the staff so that regardless of which staff member they're working with, there's a lot of consistency that our kids will see in that behavior program. And that's what they need, so that we can make sure we try to get them back into one of the traditional school settings. And so that, meaning Learning Center is really an outreach of that and all kinds of resources. And they go through in coats and hats and gloves and, and all other kind of hygiene products that they would need, but they can get those things there, the school can contact them, they'll get it over to the school then. So it's kind of a one-stop shop instead of schools having or not having their individual supply of things.
Are you going to be doing any more videos with Avera?
Yep, that's up next.
Okay.
And so one of the things under the partnerships down there, which is a great lead into it, is doing the next set of the Family Forum Series. And we just met with them last week on Thursday. And so we're, we're looking at a little different model, so I can't give a concrete of where it's at, other than we're going to continue the partnership. We want to incorporate more of our staff into it and maybe even some other resources. Now, Avera incredible partners and they've been a great asset to us. So they're going to continue to provide some of those expertise pieces. The first one to kick off the year is going to be with some of the defiance or behavior things and how can you help your child and work through some of those things. things and how can you help your child and work through some of those things. So they'll provide some of that and probably more so in this first one. Then the next one's going to be on school attendance. And so they'll provide some things on how do you help your child and how do you set some of those expectations. We're also going to have some of our staff included on some of those segments to be able to give some additional support to those families of what can you do as far as, you know, setting time constraints because we know that the technology gets in the way of that. If they're taking their phone into their bedroom, they may be up till midnight, one in the morning when the mom and dad think they're in bed. And they are in bed, they're just not asleep. And so we are continuing that. We'll add in a few things. We're hoping also, and we're starting to work on that, is there a site at the district website where it'll just be solely dedicated to family resources? And we can include those Family Forum Sessions. We can include a training module on Canvas that's been pre-taped. So it may break it down into different segments. I'll be a little careful how far I go because we haven't covered it all, but we're getting there.
The goal is to go deeper and one of the intentional pieces, like Dr. Knoll said, is using the expertise of our staff in a complimentary way. And one of the things that we know is sometimes we're working really hard at things in school, sometimes we're working really hard in a clinical setting, but just because kids come to school or go home doesn't mean that everybody is well-equipped to deal with whatever might be facing that student. And so trying to really leverage as many resources in coordinated ways as we can is one part of it. And we just have really skilled staff members that can give tips, tricks, training, you know, one-on-one kind of supports as needed to our parents. So I want that showcased and we want our staff to be seen as experts and they can just get a lot of help. So it's been nice that things got launched while last year and now we just kind of keep building out from there and making it more available because that's the website is how do we make this easier? You know, my child is dealing with this or our family has encountered this. What do we do first or where do we go?
I think that was kind of my point is seeing what we were doing, if anything, or if not, then where, you know, just even though those videos were recorded last year, I mean, it's all still very relevant information and very helpful for families. So having just those pieces somewhere as a resource.
And so that's something we'll look to expand upon and see how we even make that easier access for families. So yes, that will continue on. I did miss a little bit earlier, but we'll also have a, we'll redo and relook at that Employee Wellness Program. And Becky Dormand and her staff are working on that and looking on that and taking some of that feedback that they have to be able to work with our staff in the wellness program. And then also Molly Satter and her group is working on how do we bolster some of those supports for our student health requirements and enhance some of those health services. And we've done some of that, but some of the partnerships, we had a couple pilots last year to help get services to some kids through the community health programs. And we took a couple of schools last year and had them at different times through the year. We re-parents, we did some transportation over to community health to be able to do some basic updates and also to make sure that they're able to be involved in activities because of those physicals that they'd have to have completed and things. So we worked through some of that, but we're developing some partnerships there.
Just before we move on, here's our counseling page. If you just go to counseling under the district website under Students and Families. And if you scroll down, here's all of the Family Forum. And these were all of the presentations where people can go back to those. And so again, it's how do we repush those, I think. And I think Deanne had done some of that last year as we had one and we pushed the go back to the others. But these are laid out really nicely now on our website. And so that's where we've said, okay, kind of what's the next layer of this in terms of having more resources? And then down here we have all of our partners where they can look at that. But they're still up and pretty easily accessible.
The final area in wellbeing is the professional development. And Dr. Boyson spoke on that some as well through the PBIS and MTSS. But there was also with the Inspire Conference and her and her staff organized that and put that presentation on the beginning of the year with Tim Knoll and some of the information there to help our staff in the start of the year. And then the new hire academy, which will go on quarterly throughout the year and those, you know, put on through Dr. Boyson and her department. So if you wanted any further information on that, I would pass it on. Those are the main updates to hit on. I don't know if you have any questions on any specific things?
There's my daughter.
Well, you'll hear more about the attendance piece tonight as we go through. So excited about that for this next year.
Yeah, that's a big deal. And having those liaisons is key. And then the community continues to have kind of a task force still working on the truancy aspect of it. We still keep leaning on the legislative aspect of that because it's not one entity that's going to solve that problem. Part of its mindset, part of the judicial system, part of its parent equipping and accountability and part of it is just the time that it takes to turn such a powerful trend that we started during COVID.
I do want to speak to the community outreach that is done at Joe Foss, so being the person that was hired in that role previously, like that was, that was really eye-opening to what a simple community resource connection can change the trajectory of a kid's life. Like getting them connected to a mentor, a community entity, a resource that could help them with their family lives or giving them the opportunity to do an internship which turns into a role beyond school. Like I still have gals that I had internships three years ago that are still working at Raven. That's a big deal because a lot of their family members are either homeless, incarcerated, you know, X, Y, Z, have you. And so that model, I can't speak highly enough of that engagement piece and community connectivity and just getting kids out there and seeing something different that they wouldn't normally experience, that was a big deal. So I love that model.
And we struggled on the name of the position to start with, but truly it's an outreach person to help get those kids connected to things in the community, to opportunities that the community needs.
And our community is willing to connect.
Yeah, they are.
That's the great part.
Yeah, there was never a no when asked to come speak to high school students. There was never a no.
Yeah.
That came my way, so we're very fortunate.
Okay, community engagement, I'll spend just a little bit of time on. We talked about some of it already with what we were just talking about, expanding our strategic partnerships. We've done a lot of that over the last few years with all of the things that Teresa and Jamie have mentioned. We talked about this just now with leveraging our staff expertise and then the enhanced district website for all of the things that we talked about for availability of information. And then the part that I said I'd spend just a minute on is embedding those community conversations into the CLC model. That's an actual part of the Community Learning Center model where you move those community forums squarely to that school community, both building the leadership and the capacity of parents in that school as well as then kind of having that healthy dialogue at every school, not just we held it here so more people came from this area. So Rebecca Wimmer and her team have those queued up at all of our elementaries this year. And now we're moving kind of that responsibility to her team and the building principal. We have the mechanism, which is our World Cafe model. We have the facilitation capacity and now we'll kind of start to do that. Along with that comes literacy opportunities, comes networking. Our parents told us loud and clear last year that they want to connect more with families in their school. And so that's one of the ways that we're going to do that. We're also looking for new areas for expansion and improvement with those partnerships and just kind of always scanning the horizon. We paid a visit to the Engineering Department at SDSU with an invitation from them. They want to do an engineering fair for our kids. We have other entities that reach out and say, hey, we want to be part of the school district and we want to be able to say yes and here's where we can plug you in. Augie Kids, just recently, we said they want to be involved in mentoring and we said, here's, here's the person to connect you with so that they can come and maybe be part of our after-school programming and pair up with our kids in some mentoring roles that way. So we've got a lot happening with our community engagement initiatives. And I think we kind of talked about most of those through our other areas. Any specific questions in that area, if anything that we've talked about already?
I was just going to add that we talk a lot about, you know, getting our families and our students connected in partnerships, but I know we've had a few conversations about how can we get our teachers outside of their kind of bubble of what they're used to seeing and how can we get them to go to either our university and see what kids are learning now as they prepare to be teachers or to another school district, just something that gives them a different perspective because many of our teachers maybe went to school in Sioux Falls and grew up in Sioux Falls and then maybe they left and, you know, somewhere around Sioux Falls for school and then came back. And so are there other methods or other things that they could be doing that they're doing a lot of in another state or another regional type of thing that they just haven't had any exposure to that might give us some good ideas? So I know SDSU was very interested in hosting some teachers and I'm sure others, if they had the opportunity, would like do that as well, so.
Yeah, and same thing for our administrators. We're hoping to take a big team to view some of the latest and greatest programs around us. We thought about doing something this fall and I think if I do it, I'm going to do it next spring or right at the end of next year for teachers, which is getting them into kind of six different places. You have some learning along with it. They're exposed to kind of the rest of the story because we talk about preparing kids for business and industry, but they haven't seen it. And so how can we get them onsite? It's hard to do during the beginning of the year. It can be done, but it felt like with some of the other big things that we had, starting with Canvas and some of the big to-dos, that it just wasn't the right time and that next spring as we end the year might be better. Yeah, getting them into Amazon, getting them into, you know, the new Sim Lab for STC and just see what is out there. Yeah, that's an important one. The hard part is time, but.
But that's where the Community Learning Centers would be a great point because they bring, they can bring people in to do those sort of touch points. And then that's a connector for parents and guardians because you actually have to go in to go get your kid and it's not a tuck and roll moment. Like when you're dropping your kids off, you never get to see your teachers and parents and guardians interact. But Community Learning Centers is going to be a nice touch point for parents, guardians and teachers.
Yeah, a lot can hook onto that model and it makes it really seamless to do some of those things. Rebecca has many different kind of modules that will rotate around to different sites. And I think that's one way we can look at it is how can we kind of offer enough things over the course of time for staff too so that you get a critical mass who's kind of seen what else is out there. The only danger is then they want to steal our people. I can't afford to lose a human, so they can't have our good teachers. Okay, Becky, Staff Excellence?
All right. The initiatives that support staff excellence, of course, are fostering the professional growth, building the capacity really of all staff. And of course, that makes sense when you're building academic success and you're supporting the wellbeing of all, you have to build your staff to be able to do all those things. And then also being very intentional about staff recruitment, recognition and retention. Some of the things I'd like to highlight under building that professional capacity is we found ourselves having to create our own special education teachers. And I don't see that changing anytime very soon. Right now we are supporting 11 special ed teachers in getting, or getting their special ed coursework completed. We also have to be very proud of, for our classified staff. Classified staff means hourly, hourly staff. Forty percent of our new hires came from other positions in the district. So we are growing our own teachers and I think that's really an important piece of building your own, building your capacity and being strong for the future. We believed in you, so now you're going to take on the challenge and support our students and become the educator we need you to become, so. And then I believe Dr. Boyson talked about the initiatives we have partnering with the state and DSU and Northern for just creating more teachers, our own teacher pathway, which also helps us out on the diversity aspect because we're able to get into our classified staff, our education assistants, our behavior facilitators, who sometimes are a little bit more representative of our student population and build them up as teachers or give them a view of what teaching looks like so they know what that is before they take that jump. Some of the other pieces we'll take a look at when it comes to recognizing staff and being intentional on that. You know, we do that Staff Stars and we promote that a lot. And I know there are things that are happening at the building where they see, the buildings see the district-wide things we do and they emulate that at the building level to just always keep staff aware that there's great things happening and that they are doing great things. A small one that I can point out that might seem small to us, but it's a really big deal to our custodians is, we've got great custodians, but those that go above and beyond and it's recognized in their, their inspection scores, they get a gift card. Even if it's a $25 gift card, but it, hey, day in and day out, you're cleaning and your building score is a 98% and when you walk in the door, when the public walks in the door, when students walk in the door, they know that this is an important place because it's so clean. So that's just one of the small ways where we saw what the district was doing on a larger level and then they applied it to their group. So that's something we can be really proud of. We also honor staff at our recognition banquet. We would honor them if they were retiring or did 25 years of service. And now we're finding ways to recognize them at many levels. And I've talked about this before. We recognize you at one year and then five years and then every five years up to, I think it was 45 this year. And it started small. We got a pin and you got a really nice card of thanks and now we have to build on that. You know, how can we take that small gesture and make it even more meaningful this year? So that's something that we're working on to help just recognize staff and give them that feeling that their employer really does care about them. Because we do have some hard facts that we have to face when we looked at our teachers that left us. We did have fewer teachers leave us than last year, but not very many fewer, if you say saying that right. But 20% of them left the field of teaching altogether and we may not get them back. So we are competing for workers and people out in the community, they want our teachers because we have great teachers, they want them as employees. Another thing that we have to think about is, yes, we did gain 16 teachers from an hour around Sioux Falls. So we took 16 teachers from other districts, we recruited them in, but we lost 36. So we've got to focus on that as well because it wasn't, it was 36 really, really good teachers that went someplace else. And so how do we keep them here? So those are all the hard facts that we need to continue to work on.
Becky, with that, we also had some who came back.
We did. This year, this year we had a couple. The year before, we had even more. So that's, that's what we're hoping. You know, they, they get a, they see maybe the grass wasn't greener or it wasn't the opportunity they were looking for or they, you know, felt the nudge at the time, you know, they want to come back to what they've known, so. And then as far as onboarding with staff, that's another piece I'd like to highlight. You know, Dr. Boyson has her mentoring program, which is, which is two years, which is outstanding. We do a Cheers for Peers program for education assistants that we also want to get going for our custodians and our child nutrition staff. So we're starting that work, so that's exciting. We have a custodial supervisor now. We have that extra level of support so they're going out and touching base with all the new custodial hires and they can carry that message forward for HR like, oh, you're having trouble with your benefits, let's, we can help you with that or here's who you need to talk to or here, let's carve up some time in your day to come back to HR and get that figured out. And then we've also done some very purposeful things with our education assistants in helping them out because it's a, when you're an education assistant, it's a long time from when you start to when you get paid. So helping them out with like either hiring bonuses or really talking them through when to sign up for your benefits gives them a smoother start into the district and they're more likely to stay when their start was so smooth. So those are just some things that we've been working on under the recognition and retention for staff.
One of the things I want to just interject there too is, you know, districts, Sioux Falls included, are doing everything possible to recruit and hire, including people going back and forth between districts. You know, it's a different day right now. And as much as we've raised compensation over the last three years, we still have to continue to advocate for our state to continue looking at teacher compensation because you can't be last or nearly last and expect that that's going to continue to work over time. The Department of Ed has been trying to help with that with certification and getting people to get certified so they can come and teach, but that's treating a symptom. We have to get to the root of that. Part of it is the, the kind of national picture of what that looks like. COVID didn't help our profession. It's a people-centered profession and that took its toll, but we have to look squarely at the facts and we can't look at the percentage that goes to. that goes to school districts as an outlier year. We have to look at what has to happen year over year for multiple years to get our districts where we need to be for competing in a global marketplace where we value our teachers in public education as much as we do in Sioux Falls, but that value is held everywhere because that's eroding in many, many places. Thankfully, our public here in Sioux Falls values public education, but it's a collective effort and it can't just be school districts scrimping and trying to, you know, continue to do what we've been doing. It's not sustainable. We have to turn the tide a little bit further.
And then the, the last area is, is staff innovation. And we've taken some very intentional steps with, you know, surveying our staff and getting, getting their feedback on what they'd like to see. How, how can, how can we improve, you know, getting, getting their ideas and then acting on their ideas? And then one piece that I've heard from our, our EAs and I've, they've come to us and they've come to special education and they want the opportunity to collaborate. And so we're creating ways for EAs from other buildings to come together and do that collaboration where maybe they're, the first half hour, they get some education on a particular topic. And then after that, they're discussing that topic and then discussing, you know, what they would like to discuss. Like how, how do they handle this? How do they handle that? They just, they're, they're starving for that opportunity to get together and do collaboration like our teachers do their collaboration. So we want to provide that opportunity and it is a great way for the Human Resources Department to work hand in hand with the EA union because they want to do it. They just need a little assistance, a little organizational help and a little push. And we can help them with that. So we look forward to, to working with Renee and her leadership with the EAs and making that happen.
And hopefully that will help with retention, you know, of those EAs too, of them feeling valued and feeling like I went to this, you know, talk or this other school and I learned that Nan was doing this with her students that was effective and I had never done that or seen that in action or something like that. And then they can take that back because I think it is easy for them to get maybe even stuck in their classroom because they might just have that one student all day long. And so for them to even branch out from there to a different grade level or a different, you know, so I think that's, that's a really great idea that they're committed to, it sounds like. So that's a good way to keep them around.
They, they are a, a group that, you know, retention wise, we, we need to take some very, very intentional things to, to help keep them once we, we've got them onboarded. So that will help.
Yeah, it's going to be, it's going to be interesting to see the trends over the next three years. Because, you know, you've seen districts that aren't too far away that are having to bus students differently for programmatic reasons. Haven't seen that in a long time. Things that have just simply gone unfilled where districts have had to close school for a couple of days until they can rearrange to a point where they can, you know, just do basic services. So we don't want to get to that point. But we also have to keep promoting the value of serving children and human services type professions. Because the days of, you know, wanting to grow up and be a firefighter or a nurse or a teacher or a police officer, we don't hear that. I want to start a nonprofit and I want to work remotely and, you know, what does that do? Yeah, I want to be an influencer and have a nonprofit. That's great. Somebody needs to fix our plumbing and somebody needs to be with children. And so we have to honor that profession even as we, you know, do things in new and different ways. Okay. Mr. Vee.
Okay, first, first area is facility, future facility needs. Kind of those last three bullets under there, deal with that. And of course, we're all, we did out and we're starting the construction of the North West Elementary in, which will open in the fall of 2025. We're going to be seeing kind of our timeline here next week on, on all things like attendance, boundaries, naming, purchasing, furniture, putting on that whole timeline on that. And then we do, we're having growth out on the, kind of the, our east and west edges of, of the district. And we have some space out west because of that Lenox land that came into the district a few years ago. So we're, we're actually going to be looking as well at possibly purchasing some land for a future building out there. And so we'll be learning a lot more about that in a week or so. Next is transportation. This is most, these projects here are mostly about technology, getting field management, field trip management. It's called BusHive, an automated system. Quite clunky, kind of 1980s technology and then going on the force. So we're implementing that. We're also, instead of having the bus company get a hold of the principal or the clerical when the bus is running late for them, so then they can send a message out there. Now I'm going to be taking that over this year where they're going to be contacting directly. They call and email. Their system is very expensive on test, so we're going to have to possibly, you know, a different way to do that. But, so they're going to be doing that. So that's going to get up and running this year as well. And finally, I guess, I'm just going to stop finer. We're just trying to, trying to get more people to use that. I think we were at 35% last year when we were trying to drive that. We're at 37.1 right now, probably during the year. So that's good. Child nutrition, of course, she's trying to, still trying to get kids to eat healthier and make sure the meal, the meal service staff are in the customer service. Sometimes we forget that, that those kids coming through the line are, are customers. And so she's working on that as well, Gaye Anderson out there. And then also on the free reduced meals, we've really got the, the applications up this year. And we wanted, wanted to push that and make it as easy as possible. There's a convenient application online. They can do the paper copy if they want. They can do it through the student system if they want. And then we're also working with our partners who, our major partners who contributed in the past to covering meal, meal cost. And maybe, maybe we can go up to 200% or 215 or even 225. And then you figure you, and you, when you get over one of those numbers, you probably can afford the meals. And we went over that with that policy before. And as you know, we have already implemented where if you qualify for free, you just, you're eating. I'm sorry, qualify for reduced, you're eating for free this year. So we'll see how that works. Whether, or Gaye thinks it'll, it'll up the, the volume and then it kind of almost, almost pay for it. So that, that way. So that's what's going on there. In fiscal responsibility, we're always trying to keep our taxes in line with our neighbors or better, better top fourth. And we also, in the finance system, we're going to do a lot, a lot of innovative things there. But we, we are switching our, our time management this year so that it integrates actually with the finance system so that it isn't one thing trying to work with another. It's part of it. So that hopefully it'll be smoother for us. So that was really quick, but.
Not unexpected, Todd. Transportation aspect, you know, last year at this time, we had a lot going on and we kind of ripped the band-aid with that bus app doing at the beginning of the year. It's notably better and, you know, I reported this out too last week, but just so much smoother. And people just are catching on to that now. And our bus drivers and bus company really stepped up. They were, you know, recruiting and hiring and training all summer long to be ready and they were. I just feel badly that, you know, they have the usual things to deal with like transportation. And I was complaining myself to Todd the other day about a particular intersection that I think we need to pay attention to and, you know, just the, the pains of a growing city. And there's just a lot of traffic. My, my drive to work is almost twice as long as it was three years ago when we got here. So, you know, things, things grow and change.
And it seems like they're starting big projects like this week. Does anybody else feel that way? Like the east side, you can't even get, like 26th Street, it's terrible. And I'm like, where were you all summer?
41st.
Okay, fine. They're on the west side maybe, but yeah.
Which is good. I mean, our roads and our infrastructure have to be done. But those are the complications. And I don't know about you, but there's times where I'm worried I'm going to hit the cones. I'm not driving a gigantic yellow bus of children, you know, thankfully. So there's a lot that goes on with that, but I stopped out there on Friday and just said, thanks and good job. And, you know, they were already talking about some things for the next week and they've, they've worked really hard to make it better. It's never perfect, but it's markedly better. So we're grateful for that. Anything else? Questions for Todd? Okay, then we're going to excuse the SLT. People take a break and then we'll just do some, a couple of activities for fun.